So this is the August 24, 2017 Planning Board meeting. We actually started this meeting about 10 minutes ago and now we are actually able to videotape the meeting. So we are going to start with the first item on the agenda. Review of land clearing site plan approval application for 223 and 227 South Street. The applicant is Sienna Luxury Homes LLC. So I ask who's speaking on behalf of?
Thank you. I'm John Grenier. I'm with Jamie Grenier Associates on the engineering project.
Okay.
We are before you site plan approval for land clearing and stabilization associated with the development of what's going to be two single-family house lots on South Street. The lot that is furthest to the west is about a half acre lot. The lot that is close to the rear of the property is about a two acre lot. So the total between the two lots about two and a half acres. The total disturbance for construction of both lots is about an acre and a half. The area furthest to the east on the back of what I'm calling Lot Two, that will remain wooded. So the disturbance is mostly associated for access, for a driveway for each of the lots and then for the house construction and the yard areas. We also tried to keep an area along the northerly frontage on South Street as a wooded buffer. So more for privacy and a little bit of sound back, sound buffer for traffic on South Street. All of the slopes, all of the cut slopes which are shown on the northerly and the easterly side, those will all have permanent slope stabilization as soon as the cuts are made to make sure that there's no slumping or slumping of any of those slopes. So those will be shaved immediately when they're creating the paths. We are also for long-term erosion control and stormwater management. We are sheet flooring each of the driveways to one side, the northerly side, and having that within a stone-lined drainage channel that will, each driveway will have that and each will go into a drop inlet or basically a dry well. And those are going to be oversized, six-foot diameter, precast concrete dry wells in a bed of stone. So that long-term, we can try to control any runoff coming off of the lots that would ultimately end up in South Street. I did speak with Fred earlier today. He wanted to ensure that we made sure, create just a little bit of a hump at the entrance to the driveway and in order to better direct and make sure that nothing bypasses at the street side of the driveway along South Street and make sure that that's directed, that the end of the driveway is directed into those dry wells. It will be, both lots will be serviced by municipal water and sewer. One other comment that we've received from Fred is making sure that they have their curb cuts and any road opening permits in place and making sure that the sewer tie-ins are, if we need to put any structures, make sure we don't have, you don't want to have your sewer service going down at a very steep slope and have excessive velocities because it'll just wear the pipe out. So he wants to make sure that with the DPW they have the proper permits and we're fine with that, making sure we don't have excessive velocity and then with the soil pipes. We're also going to be capturing the roof runoff and typing that into recharge chambers so we can try to also take that out of the equation for runoff. So during at least smaller storm events, we can capture the roof runoff and put that directly into the ground. We did also get a comment from the fire department regarding having adequate turnaround here for emergency vehicles. So we looked at the requirements, ASHDO standards, and we ended up expanding some of the flat area, the parking area in front of the garages and turnarounds. We created an area with a turnaround of 50 feet wide if you go from one edge of pavement on one side of the garage to the turnaround and then 45 feet to what would be the back side of the turnaround. So we're providing, if any emergency vehicles need to come in, they have adequate area to turn around. They don't have to try to back down and go out onto South Street. Obviously, that wouldn't be able to serve as a ladder truck, but for something like an ambulance or any type of smaller emergency vehicle, it would more than, more than be able to handle something like that. I think, oh, one other item that I discussed with Fred too is ensuring that we do have 200 feet of site distance. Looking to the south, there's plenty of site distance as we look down South Street. Looking to the north, there is that bend, which does make it a little bit more difficult. But we kept the driveways, one, we kept the 15 feet off the property line to be avoiding property, which is required under zoning. So we have the 15 foot minimum for the first driveway, but we did tuck them as far to the south as we can. And there may need to be some additional clearing and maybe a little bit of grating along the shoulder of the road of South Street so that when you're looking, when you're looking to the north, you can see past the side slope or any of the vegetation and try to accomplish 200 feet of site distance to the north, which I believe you can do. You can definitely do it from the southernmost driveway. The next one up, you might need a little bit of clearing approaching that bend. I don't think you're going to have to get into taking out any of the, there's some exposed ledge right at the bend, which is about at the northern property line along South Street. I don't think you'll have to get into knocking any of that out, but to the south of that, I think you might have to take care of the, pull the slope back a little bit and definitely clear out some of the vegetation to ensure that you get good site distance looking to the north. I think I've covered most of the big topics. If there's anything else you'd like me to address or anything I forgot, please feel free to ask questions.
On the, I do have a question on the site distance issue and the ledge. I run the street all the time, so I'm very familiar with this area. And that ledge does come very close to the edge of the sidewalk. If, if you do need to in fact take some of that back, shave it back, is it, is it all owned by the owner, the applicant at this point, or are you going to need cooperation from the neighbor?
The property line does split kind of along where that ledge out proppeds. I don't want to say, no, we don't, but it could be a little bit of a possibility. You'd have to really be out in the field and take a hard look at it to see exactly where the property line is. But I'm thinking that we might be able to get away without even cudging that from the ledge.
Okay.
But we can deal with the DPW on that and making sure that we try to take it out, you know, if there's any vegetation or, because the angle that you'll be looking at, you'll be back, when you're sitting in your car, you don't have to be right on the edge of the road. You'll be about, say, 10 feet back after the shoulder of the road. And so you'll be looking to try to see someone up in this area, which is a little bit beyond, you're getting close to where the property line is and that proper ledge is, but I think you can see past it. But that's something that you check out in the field and make sure that we can, we can accomplish, which I believe we can.
Okay. Do you have questions, George?
No, I just want to get some info from the town.
Okay. Before I go to you, Fred, do you have any questions right now?
I just had a question on, so you sit on the driveway with a property that's further step back, that they probably could get an ambulance up there, but do they, can they get the hoses up there if they should need it for, how far back is the house from the road that if they need, if they can't get a ladder truck back there? Can they get the hoses back there for?
It's, you've got about 225 plus another, call it, DPW. You have about 275 feet from the road to the house. Typically hydrants are spaced every 500 feet. So they can definitely get a hose, they can, they will have enough hose for runoff there if there is five.
Is there a hydrant on this property?
Um, I'm trying to look at the closest.
I don't think it is. I think it's further down, like across from North Gate. Or was it?
I think it's across, it's, yeah, one across.
Oh, at the new, Fred, at the condos across the street?
I think it's in that general area on the outside of the curb. I don't know the exact location on it.
No, I was just curious whether that house should be sprinkled or not, if you thought that that was, they could.
That's generally more of a comment for the building inspector. Usually it has to do with the size of the building. They're used to trudging through a couple feet of snow if they have to, to run home if they can. So if it's within a couple hundred feet, I'm sure they can get there.
And that's not to say if they did have to pull up there, I mean, if there's that much of an emergency and they're stopping traffic for a fire, they, they could that go.
Right.
It's obviously for an ambulance or something like that, it's, it's nice to be able to turn around, but if there's a, a big fire and they're going to pull up there, they're going to pull up there, you know, the firemen will stop traffic and back them up. So it's not impossible, obviously, but it's nice to be able to leave, if someone needs help in an ambulance, they can pull up there and do a three-point turn, turnaround.
And just a question to Fred. Fred, so like Teresa, I go by this site all the time. They've got the little bags there now that are holding any of the sediment from coming out onto the street, but do you feel like, I mean, that's a pretty sharp grade coming down. You think that when you put the asphalt on it and the drainage, that the water won't come running down onto the?
Well, the grade that is there now isn't the finished grade.
Oh, okay.
They just started to take away the soil to get their equipment off of South Street and that, but they had cut so much of the trees, they triggered a 20,000 square foot land clearing permit. Otherwise, that wouldn't, but the grade that they dug out isn't the final grade. It's a, actually, if you have a, if you have an idea how far in, it's not very far, it's maybe 50 or 60 feet in and it's not quite level, but it's close to the sidewalk grade and then it goes up fairly steeply. But the driveway land goes up gradually.
Okay.
So that's, they were just trying to get in there, they were trying to get some of the machines in there to, you know, to cut the trees and physically get machines in there, but that's not, the driveway, that's, we're told it's finished, it'd be much less steep than what it is now.
Okay.
What's the grade? I mean, what?
I went, I gassed it out at like 10, 10 to 12 percent. And I tried to level it out. So if you ever gone up a steep hill, it's nice hills in the winter time, if you go consistently up a long hill sooner or later, you're going to run out of steam. And you'll, so I tried to at the bend flatten it out just a little bit so then you can get up and it would plateau a little bit and then turn and get up to the, to the main parking area.
The, the fire chief had made a comment about the, you know, entrance, you know, not being greater than eight, eight percent?
Eight percent off of being perpendicular to route to, to South Street. So we kept it, we shifted it to keep it 15 feet off the property line and we made it square perpendicular into, into South Street.
And so what's the grade coming off of South Street?
We, we left a flat leveled area for about, I think, 25, 30 feet. There's only a, coming back in about 30 feet, there's only a two-foot elevation difference coming from the, you know, the shoulder of the road. And so we left a leveled, leveling area. So if someone's coming down the project, they're not going to just slide into South Street during the winter. They have a leveling area so that they can stop, look both ways and then, and then pull out.
Do you have questions you want to ask now?
Yeah, I do. My questions with the drainage going back to, in previous applications, they had tied drainage into the South Street drainage. And the question I have for this is these are basins, but I know my driveway in the winter, when you, the snow starts to pile up, the basins get covered with snow. So in the winter, when the water's running all down here, if these basins are covered with snow, the water's going to run into South Street. Like, I'm not sure how the basin's going to help with the water in the winter because they have sun that hits and it melts and then freezes and.
They're going to have to keep them, they're going to have to keep them clear and keep them open. And if they don't keep them clear and keep them open, they're gonna end up with, at the, at the shoulder of the road, they're going to end up with icy driveways. So it'd be to their benefit to keep it, keep the plows from pushing snow over them and they're going to have to keep it clear.
Well, it's really tight even between those two driveways.
It is.
I just, I'm concerned about that hill being dangerous as it is to have water and ice in the winter.
They're going to have to.
Even because the dry wells are only three feet deep, so they're not even going below the freeze line.
Yeah, but that's still, even though it's, it'll still go into, it'll still drain into the ground, even frozen ground will, if there's something that's melted, it will drain into the ground.
It's just a major concern because I know my driveway in the winter.
I understood.
And I get a lot of water and my drain freezes and it gets covered with snow. And I try to dig it out all the time, but sometimes you get, you get behind. And also these driveways, like the driveway for 223 is on, goes over the land for 227, are there easements?
Yes.
And who would be in charge of this, the drainage too? Because this, this drainage bin for 223 is also on the house lot for 227. So is 227 going to be responsible?
That's only for an access easement. They'll have to, they'll be responsible for their own, their own drainage and obviously their own plowing and driveway.
So even though the basin's on 227, 223 is going to be responsible?
Yes.
For keeping it clear?
Yes.
It's a real concern for me, the steepness and the water.
It's a separate lot than that?
Yeah, this is one lot.
So 223's driveway goes on to 227 and 223 is responsible for keeping their driveway on 227 clear?
Their own driveway.
Yeah. Even though it's on someone else's property?
Or they have an access easement and they're going to have to obviously.
Can, that can be an order of conditions that they have to keep the, the drains cleared and stuff? Can you put that in or?
As a condition?
Well, I mean, how do property owners know about it?
Well, for, for individual driveways, the town of Northborough doesn't have any regulations. So the, what's before you tonight is the land clearing.
Right.
And what, what you can put on is conditions as far as the land clearing that's happening.
Oh, okay.
And that land clearing is associated with the construction of the driveway, not the actual, you know, driveway itself and, and who plows what and.
Okay. So from what I can see, you're allowed 20,000, was it square feet of land clearing a year?
No, a year.
Total?
They, they, they've exceeded, the applicant exceeded the 20,000.
Right.
Even though it's affiliated with two lots.
Right.
So that's, so the, the town stopped the, the initial work going on at the project, you know, at the site and that's why they're before you.
Okay.
So, you know, we informed them that they had to, because they've cleared in excess of 20,000 square feet, they have to come before the planning board for land clearing, which actually, this is your first one.
Right.
Let's do the site plan approval process.
Now, did it go in front of conservation? There was something mentioned that I was, so it hasn't yet?
It won't.
It won't? Does it go in front of earthworks at all?
Yeah.
Nope, just us.
As, as the, the other, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
As to the caveat with land clearing permit is if you don't have to have a conservation commission permit or an earthwork permit or another permit from the planning board or the zoning board of appeals and you exceed 20,000 square feet in total of lot of common ownership of land clearing, then you need to get a land clearing permit. And because there were no plans on file when the developer was determined to have exceeded that 20,000 square feet, we went to him, explained to him about the regulation and told him to stop. So that's why it's been stopped for about a month.
Okay.
But there, there is the letter from Robert Federico indicating that there are certain setback issues and diverences will be needed from ZBA. Have those been addressed and so they're actually not needed or?
The letter went to the applicant's engineer. He modified the plan.
Okay.
Right. And just so you know with that, if, this house, the, on the half acre above the one closest to South Street, that's going to be a side load garage under. So the front of the house is not facing the street.
Okay.
It's sideways. So with that, you have to maintain, it's, it's your side yard, but your front door's facing your side yard. So you need to maintain a 30-foot step back from the property line. So we had to take that housing, ship it further to the north to give it what would be, what's the side yard is?
15.
15.
So we not necessarily need to go up to the side yard because our front door's facing.
Okay. So those issues were addressed? Okay.
Yeah. And Bob, Bob Federico is our new building inspector.
Yep.
Who's been probably a month or so, Bob's been here. And so like Fred said, that the issues that, the questions that he had in his new letter, it's been addressed on, on this plan.
On the plans. Okay.
And then the two comments from the fire chief then addressed.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I think Mr. Grenier with Fred's letter, but.
Right.
We'll need inspections during construction and as builds to make sure that he wasn't installed properly. So he'll be, that will be done as construction is addressed.
Do you have any comments?
No, just that, you'll see in the letter, it indicates there are several conditions for monitoring during construction.
Mm-hmm.
Those should be stipulated in your decision.
Okay.
Then I had some other comments about general creative practice, which is addressed on the white paper just talked about in regards to the drainage. The driveway and John's already, we've talked about it in the agreement, they indicated a small dip at the end of the driveway before it hit South Street so that unless the driveway was covered with snow, water should shed off of the driveway and into those basins and not run out onto South Street. What we worry about is a freezing situation where you get some snow melting at the top of the driveway and it runs right out to South Street and then it adds to a freezing situation in South Street, which would be pretty bad. The other thing was the site distance. Again, it's a site plan approval, it's a land clearing permit, but good engineering practice would be that the site distance should be at least 200 feet in each direction and it should be verified and then if, if it's not there today, it should, they should do whatever they have to do to make sure that it is 200 feet before the house is off the ground.
So what, what we can do is, is I will draft, I mean, as, you know, as we normally do, I will draft a, you know, an approval with, the site plan approval with set of conditions and, and just send it, you know, to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
But the, the, you know, as far as, well, I mean, I'm getting ahead of myself, but assuming you'll be voting tonight, the, the conditions that Fred laid out and then I'll just pick up some from the bylaw that talks about the, you know, inspections and the monitoring that has to go on.
Okay. So I had another question for Fred. So Fred, if all of this engineering work is done the way you said it and then for some reason, maybe those catch basins aren't shoveled out and the water backs up and freezes and starts to come on to South Street and it's, obviously the bend in the road is pretty slippery there, does DPW then go and say, does the town then go to the property owner and say, you need to, I mean, how do you correct it if it starts to?
What we've done in the past is if there's a potentially dangerous situation where water is coming down onto the sidewalk or onto the street, the DPW would then send a letter to the homeowner, make them aware that maybe liable for any damage personally or vehicle that would have occurred because of that result and encourage them to alter the situation, just like any other single.
Okay. Okay.
But if we could get a plan modified to minimize the risk of that, now would be the time. And I believe in my discussion with John, he's agreed to do that.
Okay. Are there any members of the audience that would like to make a comment or have any questions?
So what's in front of us tonight is to decide if we want to allow more than 20,000 square feet, right? Because as a site plan, he's coming in front of us to increase, you're allowed 20,000 square feet of land clearing and you want 70,000?
No.
No, it's just.
If you go over 20,000.
Right.
It kicks, it kicks off coming to here.
Right. But it can be, I'm just saying, it can be, you can say yes, you can say no.
You can't.
You can approve or disapprove.
With the site plan approval?
Yeah.
We can't.
It says right here, to protect the health, safety and property of residents in the town of Northborough.
That's through conditions.
Right. So you would put conditions in place to ensure that, that would.
But when I go back to site plan approval, it says. Let's see, I read it earlier.
Is this what you're reading?
Yeah. Well, this is site plan approval.
The bylaw indicates that the review, one of the review standards, one of the first ones is that you, that they're required to minimize the site alteration. So if you feel that site is altered beyond what's reasonable, then I guess you could restrict that amount. What Mr. Grenier's indicating is that the bulk of the alteration is required because of the grade.
Right.
So if you feel there's a way they could minimize that alteration and still access the property properly, we're, we're, you know, the fire chief is saying the grades of the driveway should be more than eight percent. We just get as close to that as we can. Less alteration would mean maintaining more of the existing ground, making the driveway steeper. So it's a bit of a balance again.
And if the lot for proposed house 223 was at the top, there's very little slope there. I mean, it's less, so less earth would have to be removed.
If you put it back here.
Yeah.
You have to get there.
Right.
So you'd end up clearing, clearing more to get there, then you'd have a longer driveway, more runoff. We tried to keep the, and you'd still have to clear out or I think you'd have to slope it off to provide some, some type of yard. So we tried to keep the house further to the west so that we weren't clearing way back into the back portion of the lot. We tried to keep it into a plateaued area, the, on the, furthest on the west portion of the lot.
I went over the numbers to someone and they, they had gone over it with me and they said, if the house is at the top, you could probably hit the 20,000 square feet per lot and still get it done, unless there's a lot of ledge up there, if that was the reason why.
You're going to, this lot right here is 20,000 square feet.
Yeah.
You're disturbing most of that.
Right.
In order to get the driveways and get the off sloping for, we're disturbing about a half acre right there, just in the driveway area and then, you know, minimally what we have in the area of the house. If we tried to climb this driveway up, you'd end up disturbing it as much if not more and then providing more pavement for a longer driveway to get up there. I, I don't think you'd be solving anything by moving the house right back.
Teresa, can I ask a question?
Yes.
From a butter that wasn't able to make the meeting tonight.
Yep, yep, that's fine.
But, but actually, I don't know her husband, so maybe he is here. But the, John, this is for you. There, on a butter off of Joseph Road, which if you, you know, went straight, this eventually abuts.
Yeah.
You know, sort of if you look at School Street and South Street, sort of is parallel, right?
Yeah, and it is in the back.
So.
Up here.
So some things have been happening at the, at the driving range. They've been doing some clearing or re-clearing of a cart path that's there. And someone indicated to one of the butters, the, the people that were doing the clearing and.
It's over at June.
Yeah. So this is over at the golf driving range, which.
Yeah, I know that.
Which eventually, there's like four lots in between the rear of South Street and then the driving range. So the, and I explained to this woman that this, that this couldn't happen without the consent and some permits, but at least, of at least four property owners. But someone at the, at the driving range was explaining or telling her that his family was purchasing one of these lots, so I don't know if one of them is under, you know, agreement yet. And he wanted to clear from the driving range to the.
Golf path?
Exactly. Exactly.
So that's enough so I can get a golf cart.
Right, so apparently he works at the driving range.
Wow.
But I explained to this woman, and you know, I mean, it's a very real concern that, you know, because she sees, you know, some, not, not these two lots, but she saw some clearing going on near her property and the person explained that that's what they were doing. So have you? Okay, so you haven't heard anything like that, the developer hasn't indicated anything?
No.
Okay, all right. So she's been in, or has made a couple of phone calls to the golf course too and is, you know, is waiting to hear back from them. But I do want to raise it, it's, you know, it's legitimate concern that somebody told her that they were doing that.
Well, they would be crossing over private, privately owned land, so four other private, at least three. Three, okay.
Sort of the corner of a fourth one.
Right, okay. Yeah.
I just wanted to raise that, get that on the.
Golf cart.
And Kathy, was this the person who's purchasing 227? Did they say what lot?
I don't know which lot that they were, that he indicated that his family was purchasing, so.
Interesting, okay.
So one of the things that I noticed, which I thought was a good move, is that they've put a lot of crushed rock right near the entrance so that the vehicles coming in and out aren't mucking up South Street. Should that be part of our order here, or permit rather, that they continue to maintain adequate prevention?
That's the, the letter indicates that it's stricted here as to the bylaw, which allows stabilization during construction and then after construction.
Okay.
And we ask what is practical as possible, immediate stabilization after the area is graded, not to wait till the foundation is in, the house is built and then plant the grass around the sloped areas or whatever the planting plan is, but to do it as soon as it's disturbed and ready to go. And what's the greatest plan always?
And we're heading unfortunately to football. This is a good time to get the site work, the heavy site work done and get those side slopes, you know, high seeded.
High seeded.
Vegetated where we can be into end of September on Goldberg and get some growth on it before we get past in growing season.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Well, I see where it says that the planning board may deny a site plan. Under sub-16, it says the planning board may approve, they may approve with conditions and they may deny a site plan if the proponent submission does not include specific information required to make the terminations under subsection B2 of the section. But when I go to B2, it doesn't really make sense.
That's the health, safety requirements to protect the citizens of the town?
Right.
That's the B2 requirements, right. And so just speaking as one of four members present, I feel as though I have enough information to be able to make a decision, which means that I don't feel as though I have insufficient information to deny this, deny, deny the process. That's speaking for myself, but I feel as though the engineer has done a sufficient job setting forth the plan and addressing every single one of the concerns that's been raised by the professionals in town.
So if land clearing and grading says you can only do 20,000 square feet of land, that's not really a requirement?
It's not, it reads Amy that if you do more than 20,000, this process, the site plan approval process comes into play.
But we can't deny it anyway, so, is what I'm being told is if it's over 20, you go through a site plan, but you can't deny the site plan.
Well, I mean, can you deny, I mean, we've, we have this conversation almost every meeting.
Right.
About whether you can deny a site plan or not. The, there is, there is nothing statutorily in master general law that directs towns as to how to work with site plans as far as is there an appeal process, what court it goes to. So town council has, you know, continually talked about how unless that any, any concerns can't be met, you know, in a reasonable timeframe, then you can't deny, it's a site plan approval process. So, so again, the, you know, the applicant has shown, you know, what he's going to be able to put in place and how he's responded to each one of the concerns from, from the, you know, departments.
Right, I've heard a lot of concerns from residents and I'm just concerned with the water runoff in the winter and the drainage basin and then.
Oh, this would be.
Freezing up because prior.
My knowledge, the only single-family house driveways on South Street that have any type of drainage to capture water before it goes into South Street. And.
Right, but it's a big hill. Are there any at that high of a grade where the water would come off like that because?
I think so, if you look across the street.
There aren't, like, where?
There are in Chatfield Notch.
Not even on, on South Street.
On South Street.
There are, you don't notice them, but they're up back.
I just know the previous applications for the same, same properties, we've asked them to tie it into the storm drains on South Street. So I'm just curious why these aren't doing that same. I have the older ones.
What, the, the, go ahead.
Previous development was a common driveway application.
Right.
By a different applicant.
Right.
And there are different standards for drainage for a common driveway than there are for a single-family house. There are actually no standards for a single-family house, other than the law that says you can't discharge more water on your new property that was going there before you built. That's the, that's the law. Drainage standards are set forth with a particular design storm elevate, designed storm that needs to be met for common driveways, subdivisions and commercial industrial site plans. It doesn't apply to residential, but the comment from the common driveway application was that they were, they were showing storm drainage, but they were showing a discharge pointing it towards the street and it was going to run over the sidewalk. The comment from the engineering department was that that pipe should be physically connected to the storm drain in the street in order to account for any overflow from the basin that the ground couldn't handle or a severe, a bigger storm than they designed it for. Again, those standards don't apply to single-family houses.
And just to explain, I think on the denial process would be if Fred had made all these recommendations and then the applicant said, I'm not going to do it, then I think you'd then have grounds for maybe denying it. But everything the town has asked him to do, I think the applicant's saying, we're going to do it. So we have to trust that Fred is doing what's in the best interest of the property.
Can I abstain?
Can you what?
Can I abstain?
You can do whatever you want, Amy. It's fine. What you want to do, that's fine.
Do you want to make a motion?
Well, before you make a motion, any other comments from you, George? All right, anything else from the town, anything else from the public? Okay, go ahead and make a motion.
Does anyone in the public have anything to say?
No, that's what I just asked.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the permit for site land clearing for 223 and 227 South Street. We didn't have any additions to your recommendations, right, other than adding the fire chief's letter and adding your order of conditions to it, right?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? I'm against, abstaining.
Yeah, yeah, or.
There you go.
So, so that's what you did was abstain?
I'd vote against, I just don't know if that would.
Wait, are you voting against or are you abstaining? You have to make a decision.
I'll vote against, but I don't know if that's going to plus issues.
Okay. Yeah, it's just the majority of the members present. I checked, because I was going to give you the option to, because Leslie's not here and you wouldn't have known that, so I was going to give you the option, but it's just the majority of the members present, so. Right, so you're, you're good. You're good, quick, run.
I'm personally happier with this than what was coming before us.
The original one, yeah. This one's much better than the original one.
It was coming before us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening. Okay. And then we have an application for site plan review for 2 Beeman Road, which I think I saw him, right there, there we go.
Yeah, so you have, you have the application or you should have.
I only have, the only thing I have on that, oh, is that the one I got in the mail?
Yes, I have the, I have it here.
Yeah, because I didn't.
I would, thank you, just because it's on my desk at my office, read it.
There's, obviously the engineer and the company owner are here tonight. And just before Mike Scott starts, we've met as staff, we've probably met at least three times on the project to discuss what's, you know, happening at the site. It's an existing building, again, Michael knows all the details, but we had several house development meetings with the applicant. And this is a site plan approval.
I'll quickly introduce myself.
Sure.
Hi. Could you make my name so that I can be on the present, Ian Van Lines? We're currently in a neighboring community, we're out, we're in Marlboro, we'll be open building. We also actually have locations in Florida as well. We're moving in sort of, but primarily, other than, we do service the general public, but we're primarily a contractor, the Department of Defense. So we're moving the household goods and military personnel, permanent change of stations, deployments, all types of different, you know, military moves. And we close on a building here in North Road, 2 Beeman Road, at the end of April. And from the beginning, we really want to get the town involved and let them know what we're going to do. So I've met with Fred, Joe, the former inspector, kind of together, because I'm quite also the fire, the fire chief. And the reason why we're here in pretty good day is because in talking with the town was determined that we probably, this is an expansion, right, so we're going to be growing as a company. And the idea is to have enough parking going forward for both employees and for our equipment. And just in our equipment, they're like 26-foot box trucks, not like the big tractor trailers you see on the road, more like the fence ski or rider trucks you rent personally. So we're adding more creative space to allow both employees to park and for us to have additional parking. So we, for, not that we use now, but allow us to grow in the future. And with that settled, let us refresh on takeaway.
Okay, thank you.
On the record, I'm Mike Scott, I'm an engineer, I'm a water engineer. We talked to Kathy and Fred this morning, we provide a site plan that you have come to, very nominally. And I'm going to give you the sheet that matters.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
That will be that's what I got, but. It's the sheet that sort of details this area that you're leaving.
Thank you. We can, you want to share?
Okay, we share. We don't have enough space here.
Redress is 2 Beeman Road and for those of you who are not familiar with, I don't know if you're familiar with this.
It's on, it just said it's on camera. So actually, you can come a little closer, Mike. If you just want to, it has to be on this side in order for the camera to pick it up.
Beeman is cul-de-sac that's up the, up Lyman Street and actually it's up Talbot Street, which is this loop here. This is Lyman, this is the state hospital, so you're on the southern southeastern part of town. Fred, part of the element is the swamp.
Crane.
Crane, it is crane.
Crane, yep.
So it's a crane swamp that you see here, this is the water tower, this is the old state hospital here. It'll, you think that's some of the part of the wastewater and other parts of their system or facility were back here. That's what we're seeing right there. And then you have a rail line through here and the road continues up towards the high school intersection. The building is inside the yellow, this is a nine, just under 10-acre lot, a third of which is in the swamp. And then the other two-thirds is upland area, you can see FedEx, this is their big facility here. This is Iron Mountain, it's a small commercial and industrial operation. I'm sorry. Oh. And then this is the Eagle leasing storage yard for their trailers. There's, I think this is still residential use, but the other lots here are, are all commercial or industrial. And it's industrial, industrial zone parcel. So as Oded mentioned, the intent is to reuse the building and for the purposes of meeting his own staff needs and his facility, we even wanted to expand the parking area. And there, I think right now we're going to buy, clean the building up again. Is that true?
Say it again.
If you're in the process of removing some of the non-destructive elements inside the building, cleaning the building.
Uh, yeah, it's a big, big empty building, it actually hasn't been occupied for about two years. It used to be occupied by the Trojan Steel Company and they used to basically distribute steel out of that building. So it's been sitting empty for two years and we want to put some other into it.
So we're looking at the same sort of orientation, the elements at the top, this is the cul-de-sac, here's the building, but you don't see the swamp and all the land that's wooded and wet off to the east. It's about a 39 and a half thousand square foot facility. The, there's parking, there are two driveways off of Beeman, it's got public water, it's got its own private subject system up on this end of the building, and that was tested and passed ISO 5. So everything on site is operable right now. It's a large detention basin here, there is parking in front, but nothing striped. There are loading areas at the front and there's actually, this loop driveway allows the equipment to drive through the building. There's a slab here and then the driveway here is about four feet below grade, so they blow it onto flatbed or overhead entrance, drop materials or finished product, all the raw materials and take them away. One set of steps, a walk steps and then entrance to the front. This is sort of your main entrance for staff and employees and otherwise it's currently not described. The site is pretty heavily bordered by woods, you can see that in aerial photo. There's a small landscape island out here with some pretty significant pines on it. And at the rear of the building, it was, we discovered during the winter when we started this project, a small isolated one. So we were at the conservation, we were at the conservation commission last week. I think that they, because of the proposed work, which you'll see in a second, it infringes here. We made a filing with the commission, this is not a state, it's not a state filing, it's under the local jurisdiction. The commission approved the application last week. So sort of this shows the entirety of the lot. You can see that really you're talking about a third or 40% of the lot that's being presently being utilized. And the intent is to really just re-expand right here. So when Oded talked about expansion, he wasn't talking about the building, he was talking about the parking. And what will, what would occur here is to provide for additional parking for employees here on the west side of the lot and then store the trucks that he was describing as, as they're pickup and delivery vehicles at the site, but off to the side of the building and then at the rear of the building. So this is, would be the truck storage. And then, as I mentioned, there's no striped parking today at the site. Certainly you can park a number of cars out there, but there's nothing parked, nothing striped formally. So the plan is to provide the required 41 employee spaces or car parking spaces in the front here and then along the side of the building. This is the sheet that I gave, this is a flipping to, it's all in the color, so. What we end up with is, again, no changes to the building, no real new infrastructure in terms of water and sewer. There isn't a full, the plan does show stormwater, this plan would not, that's on sheet, you see 301, the grading and utility plan. But new parking essentially from here back and the original drive is inside that, really is this kind of expanding the drive to the west and to the east and to the south. And no parking, no pavement changes up front other than the push. This create parking at the entrance, this building presently is not accessible under the 88, or it was built in the 80s, so different standards. You could actually get into the building here at gray or get into the building here at gray, but the general public could enter at the front door. So that would be around the, could be this design. So the parking pushes into the landscaped area slightly. The deviation that this plant has over what we originally submitted was, we originally had a 30-foot aisle here, but in an effort to, it will cost saving, save some of the construction that already occurred out there, the stairs and the fact that the power runs right through this area and we had a nominal cut there to avoid hitting the main primary feed to the building, we pulled the parking back about six feet. So with that, there is aisle up to 24, which is. up to twenty-four, which is still adequate for fire and truck access, um, so that's one of, one of the, one of the things that you see that differs. Another thing that happened was, when we filed this, we had, uh, pre-final meeting, post-final, we had a meeting with these guys and Mr. Federico about a week and a half, actually it was the night of, the day of the con company, and, um, we did, with the discussion about parking, there's gonna be somewhere on the order of four thousand square feet of office space inside the building where there is none today, so it'll be two uses, a little office for a staff and the rest of the storage. We had calculated the parking entirely on storage, introduction of some office meant, we had to add four parking spaces, so what we did was, we just, we added a parking space in this bay, we added three parallel spaces here, which don't, didn't require any pavement. Reality is, there's significantly extra vehicle parking now on the site because there's adequate space in back, um, for vehicles. And another thing, this, your operation, this is not something where the general public, people, this is not like a U-Haul, you're not coming to get your stuff, only people that are handling it are DN Van Lines employees, so they're not gonna, there's not gonna be some chance of getting access to their, their, their storage. So, there's more than enough parking, um, for the operation in largely selling. I think those are the two most significant changes that we made, and again, they're fairly higher. The design, uh, also involves, it's not clear here, but it's clear on the other plan, the stormwater basin here, we analyzed it under today's requirements, um, it's all overgrown, it's not, it hasn't been touched in thirty years or twenty-five years, just some pretty mature vegetation in the bottom, and normally we would call for that to come to go, but, what, what we talked about with Fred, with the con com discussed too, the, the vegetation's healthy and it's obviously using the water, so why get rid of it? Other than on the banks of the, on the slopes of the, because you don't want the slopes to collapse if, if the trees get, the entire two large of the mansion fall. There's no evidence of any erosion, and, you know, we had a pretty wet spring, we were out here an awful lot, trying to point, figure out when this would dry out and make sure it wasn't a verbal pool, and at the same time, we've run out here, this thing was dry, even after a really significant storm event, so it's definitely draining itself through the bottom, there's, there's some pockets of good soil out here, um, and this, it's, some of it's gotten, the septic's here, they had good testing for the septic, so, um, we're pretty confident that this is gonna be fine. We did rerun the, the model for the additional pavement that's added back here, but you can see functionally, there's good circulation, vehicles can still drive through the building should they, should they need to, um, better fire access than before, oh, that's the other thing that changed, uh, the fire chief asked for a hydrant on site or a fire cope, so again, it's not showing on this plan, but it's showing on the plans you have, um, there will be a hydrant in this area, which then brings it within that required distance to the building. And then the other thing that's, again, out of this plan, it's on the grading plan, is that in addition to the cleaning and, um, maintenance to this basin, the addition of new catch basins to provide water quality, which is not there today, but will comply with current standard, there's a smaller filtration area in this area, and that's to, uh, offset the increase in pavement, so there's some groundwater recharge. None of the work is in a, um, a groundwater overlay, but it's immediately adjacent to the zone three, so we're putting some water back, uh, in the ground with this design, and we did honor this, the town's, uh, more than exceed the town's requirements for the wet and offsets and back, so we're not showing this part of the site, there's nothing going on over there, there is, there's a walking trail that runs along the back of property, people have been cutting through here, and actually walking through the detention basin, so that's not gonna drive the detention basin, this is a foot trail. So, that's something that I, I feel aware of, but, um, that's what you see here. After that, this is just entirely wood. So, in, in summary, it's reuse of the building, it's probably less intensive from a traffic standpoint, there won't be the tractor trailers, there won't be as many deliveries of materials, probably more employees on site, this is not a twenty-four hour operation, it's not a three-shift operation, so it's normal business hours. We bring, the design brings this up to, I believe, what, present water quality, sewers can hand out, um, and meeting the town's requirements for parking and the, uh, wet requirements.
Excellent. Well, welcome to Northborough, it's always good to have new businesses coming to town. I don't have a letter for me, the board doesn't have a letter for me, do you have any comments before I ask the board?
No, just gonna let you know that I did do a review memo, um, I did review the project with the conservation commission, we're quite happy with, uh, the fact that they're releasing some of the trees in the detention basin because it's working so well, but the, in there's, like Mike said, it's normally not what's desirable, but since we're working in this case, um, I think that the use of the property that's proposed is benefit, uh, and cleaning up the site that's, you know, there was even there.
Right. Excellent. Okay. George?
Is the recharge, just recharge of what's in the parking area, or are you gonna recharge off the roof as well?
The roof is tied into the, presently the roof drains run right into the detention basin, so, and because it's, it's a flat roof, so it has, it has internal drain, so the area over here is, um, only for the new, uh, pavement, and it's really capturing the rear, I didn't describe it, but there's a pretty good sized hill here that drains down to the, to the property, it splits, it either runs to this side of the building or to that side of the building. My guess is this was created when they excavated, to do the construction, they had a lay down here, area here, and someplace flat to put the drains or get around the building, they just don't, it's not drainage properly, but, um, the infiltration area there, combined this, it is making an attractive infiltration of the space, there's no question, there's a lot of water down there, quite a bit of which is the building, the building's almost an acre, and that's all that we need for the, for the basin.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Sure? Any questions?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure, so the trucks entering into the facility are, are the small, like, U-Haul trucks, right?
Right, not tractor trailer.
They're not tractor, is it like, do you foresee growing into where you would have tractor trailer trucks coming there at some point in time in the future?
So, the only example where a tractor trailer come up would come would be doing a delivery, let's say, for example, our suppliers for, let's say, a curragis, Victory Packaging, and, uh, potentially, let's say, they would make a delivery, they don't usually use tractor trailer trucks, but if they came and made a delivery to us, we would accept it. Uh, there are docks, docks of the building, but, um, our business model does not involve the use of tractor trailers, um, so, I mean, certainly it could come on site, but it's not gonna be a regular occurrence.
Okay. So, that would only be my concern, my biggest regret is never, um, sort of given the same condition that we gave a Dewey pile, which was no trucks to come through the center of town or go down Church Street, which now you see Federal Express using a lot, so just sort of concerned with any of the warehouses that are happening in that area, like, yours are smaller, so I'm not quite sure it's, it would have the same impact as, we're seeing the numbers of Federal Express trucks coming down Church Street and cutting through the center of town, it's natural, they don't wanna go all the way down to four ninety-five and loop around, it's a shortcut for them. So, that's just one concern of mine, I don't know how the board feels about, you know, um, you know, sort of a, a moving company, I don't know what your volume is, I don't know if you're liking a Dewey pile, I don't really know how many trucks come and go and what the routes would be, or do you just disperse when you're sort of?
I can give you like, like, let's say you work for DN Van Lines as a driver mover, so you would, uh, you would probably come in with your car in the morning, you park your car, you go in the office, you grab your paperwork, probably talk with your operation manager, get some, some of the details, and then you depart, you typically would be going either to like somebody's house like yours, or you could be going like to Hanscom on base, um, and you would, uh, either do a point A to point B move, or let's say we're moving somebody from Marlboro to Framingham, or another example would be, uh, you'd be picking up in Marlboro and then bringing it back to the warehouse, going to, we call SIT, Storage and Transit, short-term storage. Uh, so typically the trucks are exiting once a day and coming back once a day, um, so it's not, it's not like a high-volume operation where they're kind of going back and forth a lot, uh, they leave in the morning, they come back in the afternoon, that's simply the routine. I will tell you that, um, we currently have a building in Marlboro, and we'll be doing very similar things now, if you had to ask me how many tractor trailers, trailers access our building on monthly basis, I would say it's like two or three, so certainly it can happen, but considering that we have a huge trailer yard right next door, which is Eagles, and a huge FedEx facility right next door, which is all tractor trailers, I don't think we're gonna have any real impact.
Yeah, I agree, I, probably if it's like the model you said, but I wish, as a board, that we had made the conditions with Federal Express, which is now why we're seeing the heavy traffic downtown and on Church Street.
Sure, I know, but I wanna let you know that we typically will take the main, I mean, we will hit four ninety-five, or we would, it wouldn't make sense for us to travel through, uh, non-main roads, it's not typically what we do, and that's not typically the way that we route our crews, because all of our operation managers actually present a route to the, to the driver in the morning, he's required to follow that route, our trucks are GPS tracked, so we know where they are.
Yeah. So, I don't know how the board feels, we put the order on for, um, a Dewey pile that they, unless they had a delivery in the center of town, that they were not to use going down Bartlett Street, cutting through the center of town, or using Church Street, that they were to go out to the highways, but it doesn't sound like, um, they use a tractor trailers or you have that much volume of work that would take you through the center of town.
Sure.
Can you add that kind of a condition on this type of a permit request, site plan review?
Well, the, we don't have any, um, like, I don't have any numbers, because they don't, because they don't have those numbers.
Right.
As far as tractor trailer movement, you know, a Dewey pile was very specific in they were gonna be, you know, you know, it's twenty-four hour operation, it's three shifts, so I mean, it was, and they actually volunteered that also, um, that they would, you know, the whole reason why they were, wanted to locate there was to get out to four ninety-five, so.
I know, I just really regret that we didn't do it with Federal Express.
I mean, where there's not, you know, where they're public roads and where they're, it's, it's an industrial zoned.
Right.
Area, um, you know, I, I don't know where you would want to limit them, I mean, they have to use Lyman Street, they have to use Bartlett Street.
No, I agree, they have to use Lyman and Bartlett, but they can use Bartlett and then go right out to four ninety-five, but a shorter version is coming through the center of town and cutting down, which is what all the truckers do, they come down through the center and cut out, or at least all, that's where all Federal Express trucks do, and they go down Church Street, only 'cause I know it and I see it all day long.
Well, yeah, we also have three Federal Express facilities in town.
Yeah.
So, it's not just the Bartlett Street site, but, but there's, there are three facilities in town.
One thing I will tell you is, we have, we've had a really great relation with Marlboro, we have a really good relationship with Marlboro too, so those are the type of things where, you know, I'm a pretty responsive person, and that's pretty easy, you know, big honor, even if it wasn't, you know, official, if somebody from the town called me and said, "Hey, can you try to do this?", you know, makes everybody happy, we certainly wouldn't have a problem doing that.
Yeah. I think the, the, the concern would only be that in the event you expanded your operations such that you required the use of the eighteen wheeler vehicles in your operations, obviously you have no control over your vendors, but your operations, that you would minimize the amount of travel through the center of town, that would be it.
It's not, it's not our, um, it's not our business model, let me say another thing, when you, uh, like, you could jump in one of our trucks and legally drive it, because it doesn't require CDL, any trucks under twenty-six thousand GBD gross vehicle weight, you don't require CDL, anybody who's a class D can jump in and drive it, um, that makes our driver training and hiring a lot simpler, because our pool is basically any person that has a license, we can train them, we can get them in our trucks, so I cannot, when we say expansion, we probably, I mean, adding more personnel in the current way that we do business, so I don't see us trying, changing our business model just because we're moving to Marlboro, and I don't see us ever really adding drivers that are driving or owning any tractor trailers, so if it's our usage of tractor trailers, I can assure you that something you don't need to be worried about.
Oh, I appreciate that, 'cause.
Is the site plan review required every time there's a change of ownership, or just because of the construction?
No. This is the, um, the, the amount of parking spaces that they want to add kicks off.
So, the, the real concern is, you guys are here for fifteen, twenty years, then you leave, and then FedEx says, geez, we need another location in town, and we didn't put the restriction on it, so I'm kind of thinking we should try and put it on.
Well, the restriction would be for DN Van.
Because if Federal Express took it up?
That's, I mean, that's who your applicant is, so I mean, the, the condition is for the applicant.
It doesn't run with the land, it runs with the property.
Could we put a restriction that the site plan runs with the owner, so if it does ever change hands, they'd have to come in front of us again?
It's, uh, the, the site plan, again, doesn't work that way, especially.
Right, but I think you could put a condition in, oh.
You know, the, those, you know, by law.
All right.
You know, run with the land or run with the owner, um, and you have to have language in your zoning if you want a special permit to run just with the owner as opposed to with the land.
Yeah.
So.
So, I, I think what's gonna have to happen is you're gonna have to stay in business in Northborough, in this location, until we find a way to transport things without the use of vehicles.
Well, let me just point one other, one other thing out here.
That's how it's gonna have to work.
Trailers are typically fifty-three feet, our trucks are much shorter than that, these spots that are kind of created here for the trucks are, would not fit trailers, so even if, let's say, for example, FedEx are great, DN Van's out of town and wanna buy a facility, they would probably have to come.
They gotta come back.
Come back anyways, because they're not gonna be able to use the property as we're currently designing.
And, oh, that bought the property, this company's situation.
Yes, we bought it.
Okay, we bought it. Okay.
All right. Thank you, appreciate it.
That'll make you feel better.
We just wanted you to understand the sensitivity to, uh.
Any other questions or comments, or are we?
Nope.
Good for anything else in the town? And there's no one in the public who wants to talk, so would somebody like to make a motion? Anybody?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the application as submitted for Two Beaman Road, DN Van Lines.
And there were no modifications on this one, right? No modifications? No recommendations to be incorporated?
Plans will be dated, I mean, but the decision will reference the plans that were submitted.
So, referencing the, the newest set of plans?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I have the, I have.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any more discussion? No, one favor, I. I'm very excited you're coming to town.
Welcome.
That's great.
Welcome.
Welcome to town. Yes, absolutely.
George, you did the second, I'm sorry.
I did.
Thank you, take care.
So, the, um, I have two orders, quick update tonight, but, but they're real quick.
Okay. Yes, how many times have you said, oh, they're really quick?
I know, but these really are.
Okay, okay, okay.
Look at Kathy's binder, matches her shirt.
I know, right?
Teleco coordinated.
Don't distract her, she's trying to tell us something.
Central, um, you, we need to appoint, um, a delegate to Central Mass, the jail planning commission, um, they go by the fiscal year, so, um, that's, so we received the letter at the beginning of, um, July, the way it came in. So, that, that needs to be done, and then, um, I just have to fill out the, the paperwork for that.
I'm actually gonna nominate, can I make a nomination? I'm gonna nominate Amy for that because you've, you attend these all the time, or she said all the time.
I just can't make the one on the fourteenth.
I don't think they're gonna penalize you for that.
'Cause I did tell you, Kathy, in the email, that I would do it, but I can't make it.
I'm gonna do the one on the fourteenth.
I think the issue is that I, um, I've served in this representative capacity for CMRPC for a number of years, and I have no time to go to any of those meetings, and so that, I can't report anything to the board on it, I really can't, so it's, they're never right here in Northborough, they're never at a time where I can actually get there, so. Is that, it does?
No, I, I can do it, I just, like I said, I couldn't go on the fourteenth.
Does anybody else want the job?
Maybe wanna fight Amy for it?
No, no.
Alan?
Yeah.
Michelle?
No. As long as I can keep open space.
It's all yours.
'Cause do we have to go on any of us?
You did all the other ones.
I'm not taking anything away, we're good.
Be the one.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Uh, and then the only other thing I just wanted to let everyone know is the, um, master plan, um, RFP is out.
Yay!
And.
Ross.
And, um, so, app, uh, not applications, um, RFPs, I forgot what the exact date, um, the, um, that the, the procurement officer, who's the, the assistant town administrator, the procurement officer, who's the assistant town administrator, I think it's the, either right at the end of September, it's generally a month that you give the consultant. See, the right at the end of September, or beginning of, no, excuse me, beginning of October.
Okay.
And it has to be from the date when we put it, we have to do certain advertising of it. And so that is going into the state register and when, which is next week. And that's the, like, the month that we want.
Okay.
But it's been sent out to, you know, various consultants that, you know, the master plan.
Excellent.
And speaking of the master plan, I had mentioned to Kathy, I don't know how the board feels about this, but I mentioned to Kathy that the three of us who are going to be on it-
Yay.
And that I would be happy to co-chair or even chair it, but co-chair it if there was someone else who wanted to chair it, the master plan, because they're going to need someone. So, well, I don't know, has John started his selection process?
No, no, we'll do that come September.
So I don't know if the board thinks this is okay and then we can, they're happy with that or if somebody else wanted to do it, but we can think about, it doesn't look like this is going to be scheduled too soon.
Unfortunately.
It doesn't, I don't think we're going to be meeting until probably sometime in November or December, so.
Yes.
And which is, pretty much goes with our plan, because Kathy gave us a timeline.
Right.
So we can think about and talk about the next meeting, but I think we probably should let John know as a letter first.
And then just as far as your, your next meeting, the, the first and the third would be the fifteenth and the nineteenth?
Fifth and the nineteenth. So I'm going to be-
Just wanted to double check if that was okay or not.
I'm going to be out of town on the fifth. I, if, I mean, I'm more than happy to allow the board to just meet without me. There's nothing on the agenda, right?
Right, I don't have, it's too late for any, I don't have any applications-
Right, there's no applications.
-plan or anything.
So it would just be-
The Tuesday after Labor Day, right?
It is.
So, I mean, you could just, you could go to the nineteenth and then if we needed to schedule another meeting.
But on, on the nineteenth, we really should start to talk about the various bylaw issues that we've got coming up.
Yep, I actually, Judy Barrett, who's, who, you know, we hired to do the duplex, is the, she's going to be back from vacation, I think it's next week. And because I asked her if she could come to the meeting in September or October, and it's just a two-meeting contract, but I asked her, so she's just going to get back to me when she comes back as to which one of those dates works.
Okay. Since it's a two-meeting contract, you know what we're going to do? Are we, is she talking to each one of us individually? Are we talking about duplexes as a whole and she's going to?
That I don't know. We haven't, we haven't talked about it over the summer.
Okay.
I think that's probably too early for her to come back in September, because shouldn't she talk to us individually first and then come back?
I don't know, like, like Amy was just asking, I'm not-
Isn't that what we agreed to?
I'm not sure exactly how she's going to, you know, do that. And, so.
Okay, so she probably shouldn't come till October then, right? No?
Right, I mean, she'll let me know.